Welcome, everybody, and thank you for joining us for this next, you know, hour-ish to talk about an amazing initiative. But before we dive in, we have Councilmember Sandy Nurse, one of the champions of the CLT Initiative and the Community Land Trust Movement as a whole. So Councilmember Nurse will kick us out.
Good morning. Can you hear me? Yes, okay, great. Sorry, I was like jumping between devices. Good morning, everyone. Thank you for everyone who's got on this morning after this long weekend. I want to recognize all of the council members who are here. Appreciate you being here and sending your teams. I see Patino's office is on, Councilmember Sanchez is, and I'm sure others will join on as well. So I'll keep it really brief because the experts who know everything about CLTs are here. We're just really advocating to increase the Community Land Trust Initiative. I know many of you have joined us when we were out last year rallying and the year before to increase this initiative. I think it's important to highlight that the portfolio and assets of the community land trusts across the city has increased, thankfully. And we're really excited about that, but with that comes a lot of resources needed. One, for operational costs, capacity building, training, making sure that we're really setting up these buildings and programs and the advocacy for success. So we want to make sure this movement has the resources it needs as it's gaining ground. So thank you all for being here. I think it's a pretty, it's a pretty small ask, $3 million is very little in comparison to the whole budget. And I know that we are literally scrapping, we are out there scrapping for resources for everything right now. And in all of the cuts that have been devastating over the last two and a half years has created a situation where every little dollar counts. But this is a, this is a movement and this is an initiative that we can invest in that has long-term wins for our communities and creates long-term stability. So I'll stop there, but just thank you all for, for being here this morning. And thanks to the New York City Community Land Trust Coalition for all the work that you do.
Thank you so much, Councilmember Nurse. And yeah, thanks, everybody, again, for spending time with us this morning. Appreciate all the council members and staff on the line. I think the last time we checked, there were representatives from about 25 council offices that had signed up. We are recording this and we'll share it with everybody who registered in case anyone has, you know, missed it. So we'll circulate the recording as well as slides, as well as the playlists, playlist that Elise and our team put together for the Zoom. My name's Daynira Del Rio. I'm the Executive Director of New Economy Project. We are a citywide organization that co-founded the New York City Community Land Initiative, a coalition that has grown and includes all of the groups that are here today speaking and many others. And we've spent the past decade and more working to build New York City's Community Land Trust Movement. Back in 2019, many of our groups worked with the City Council to create this budget initiative, the Citywide Community Land Trust Discretionary Funding Initiative. That is now in its fifth year and, as you're going to hear today, has provided really urgently needed funding to support grassroots CLTs in carrying out their vital work. And it's specifically that's funding and supporting community and tenant organizing. It's supporting education and outreach, reaching thousands of low-income New Yorkers every single year. It's supporting CLTs as they go through the process of formation, incorporating their community land trusts, growing their CLTs grassroots leadership, finding sites in their neighborhoods, including vacant lots, distressed multifamily buildings and others that are suitable for the CLT and going after those properties to bring them into permanently affordable community control. The initiative is also funding for citywide organizations, including New Economy Project and others you're going to hear about shortly, that are supporting those grassroots CLTs by providing legal and technical support, training, and much more. So if we can go to the next slide. We, like I said, when we started this initiative in 2019, there were far fewer CLTs actually in the city that, and most were at very, very early stages of planning. We, of course, have a Cooper Square CLT. We have Harriet, who's on their board here with us today. Cooper Square has been stewarding and protecting almost 400 permanently and deeply affordable homes in the Lower East Side since 1994. They're our veteran, our inspiration from which we have learned and drawn a lot from. And most of the other CLTs have taken off in just the last few years. And again, this City Council initiative has provided a lot of the support to help those groups get that work off the ground. And as you'll see here on the map, we're looking this year to receive $3 million. Again, it's a modest ask and we keep hearing that from council members. But the reality is, we have not received more than 1.5 million to date to support all of these many organizations across the city. So we'll take the 3 million and we'll continue building and fighting. But this is what we urgently need so that groups can, one, continue to build on their success. Groups are reaching their next stages of development. They're going from those early organizing stages to actually bringing properties into community stewardship so that they can be permanently affordable and meet local residents' needs and combat displacement in their neighborhoods. We also need increased funding so that we can expand the initiative and bring in more CLTs that need this funding to take their, to, to help their CLTs get off the ground. And that includes for CLTs like Real Edgemere and, that you're going to hear from today, also Ravenswood CLT, Brooklyn Level Up, and many others. As you'll see also on the map, you know, CLTs are working in neighborhoods of color, including many of your districts, many of the districts represented here on today's call. And we don't need to tell you this, but these are some of the neighborhoods that have the highest eviction rates in the city, neighborhoods that are experiencing displacement that are being developed, but really with luxury development and few low-income, lower-rent housing units or development that's really meant for long-time residents. You'll hear today about groups that are working in neighborhoods that have high concentrations of signature bank-financed buildings, where tenants and CLTs are working together to achieve good outcomes for tenants and so much more. The CLTs that we are working with and that the initiative is supporting are also working to create community and other commercial spaces and to meet a whole array of their community's needs. So I hope that you all can see this map and take some heart and encouragement at seeing this really large number of CLTs that are across all five boroughs right now in New York City. We have one of the most vibrant CLT movements of any city in the country. And there are a lot of eyes on New York, looking to see where we go next. Next slide. This is just a timeline to show you again about, sort of give you a picture of how quickly and relatively recently the CLT movement has taken off. Again, we got Cooper Square from 1994, and then there was a long stretch where there weren't a lot of CLTs being formed. And that started to change in 2014 as the Citywide Coalition got off the ground, worked with East Harlem Albario CLT to launch as the first new CLT incorporated in, you know, two decades. Mott Haven Port Morris, you're going to hear from, got off the ground around the same time. And then, starting in 2017 and onward, that's really when we started working with groups to provide in-depth training, helping groups learn about CLTs and how to organize and sustain them. And the CLT Initiative in 2019 was an outgrowth of that work, where City Council got together and decided they were going to help those CLTs to now go back to their communities and implement that learning and bring this urgently needed model across the city. Next slide. We want to just underscore a couple of quick things. As you hear the presentations, right, you're going to hear about all the different ways that CLTs work, the different ways they look, the different kinds of development that they're doing, and much more. What we want to underscore is that the CLT model, these community land trusts, are bringing an urgently needed new layer of protection and accountability to development in New York City, affordable housing development and other community development. So as you, as this image sort of depicts, the CLT, the way the CLT works is that it owns the land. The CLT is a nonprofit that owns land and through that ownership of land is taking it out of the speculative market for good, permanently owning the land. And through that ownership, the CLT determines, working with community residents and stakeholders, what kind of development happens on that land. And keep, make sure that that stays permanently affordable so that if you have, for example, residents of a multifamily building, let's say it's a housing cooperative, and later on, the next generation wants to sell at market rate and sort of, and take off and leave with their windfall, they're not able to do that because the CLT owns that land and makes sure that the housing and other development on top remains affordable forever. The CLT model is flexible, as we said, and as you'll hear again, working to support housing and a whole array of other needs. We know that commercial space is urgently needed for local small businesses, worker cooperatives, and others. And there's a whole array of community needs from open space to renewable energy infrastructure that CLTs are really leading the way in pursuing. The CLT also is democratically controlled, right? So the CLT itself is governed by community members and other stakeholders, and it is engaging the community in ongoing planning and organizing to shape neighborhood development, development that's on the CLT land and beyond. And that organizing across generations and across race and class is just a really important, critical part of the CLT. It's not just about developing the land, but it's about engaging community members as active and ongoing stewards. So that's another layer that the CLT is adding to the existing affordable housing and community development sort of landscape. And finally, racial equity and self-determination are, are really the heart of this city's Community Land Trust Movement. And really, the impetus for a lot of the work that CLTs are carrying out is to ensure that Black and Brown communities have a say over what happens in their communities, that they can work together to prevent their neighbors from being displaced, and that they can collaborate and make sure that development and housing is meeting public needs, meeting, working for the public good. So you're going to hear about how this all works in practice. I just want to say, from a very high level, what this initiative, again, has done is enabled groups to organize thousands of New Yorkers who otherwise would not be actively involved in their communities' housing and neighborhood development. It's enabled CLTs to win public RFPs, these requests for proposal, to develop public land that has been languishing, vacant for decades. It's enabling CLTs to acquire and rehabilitate multifamily distressed buildings, to lead community-led planning efforts for vacant lots and other underused sites, and launch new campaigns to win policy change. We're really pleased to be working with many of your offices on the Community Land Act, which is a set of bills, legislation, that we're hoping gets enacted in the next year or so, that are going to open up opportunities for more CLTs and other nonprofits to bring more land into community stewardship. If you go to the next slide. And while the policy work is not the focus of this initiative, the fact that we have robust CLTs is going to be really important when those policies become enacted so that this landscape of CLTs are ready to go, ready to seize those new opportunities. You see some of the headlines, they've changed since we first started. And there's a lot now of attention, and rightfully so, to see, being paid to CLTs that are really breaking ground in New York. So without any further ado, we're going to turn it over to our first presenter from among the CLTs. I'm going to turn it to Hannah Anusha from the East New York CLT.
Thanks, Day. Hi, everyone. Again, I'm Hannah Anusha, and I'm the Campaigns Director for the East New York Community Land Trust. Thank you so much for being here. And I want to give a special thank you to Councilmember Nurse for hosting this and for Councilmember Banks' office for being here and supporting us as well. East New York is on the front lines of gentrification in Brooklyn, and the specific mission of our CLT is to prevent the displacement of longtime low-income residents. And on that front, we actually just celebrated a major victory. We just bought our very first building, 248 Arlington. And it really wouldn't have been possible without years of tenant struggle against the slumlord who lives in Westchester and wouldn't show up and wouldn't make repairs. And it also wouldn't have happened without the support of our council members and without organizing and fundraising from East New York CLT's members. So now, 248 Arlington tenants don't have to fear eviction and live in unhealthy conditions and chase after a bad landlord who essentially made a bad financial bet that he could displace rent-stabilized tenants and who lost that bet after the 2019 rent laws passed, but was really doing everything in his power to get tenants out through creative means. So yeah, this is a drop in, in the bucket, but it's a major victory. And there's so many more over-leveraged rent-stabilized buildings and tenants living in poor conditions and landlords who actually want out. And all of our CLTs need funding in order to build in-house expertise to take care, to take advantage of this moment that, in reality, you know, may change in the next five to 10 years. And so, for example, East New York CLT was founded in 2020, and we only just hired our second staff member through private fundraising this past October. And we've been really able to build a strong organization and acquire our first property on such a shoestring budget, thanks to an army of really dedicated volunteers. But it really hasn't been easy. And right now, at least for us, we really need to hire at least one more staff member to help the tenants become co-op shareholders, co-op shareholders, and to prepare the residents to co-govern the building themselves effectively. And we're also trying to step up so that we can scale our model. We're organizing against two of the worst deed thieves in the city, and we're trying to push them off this house, in particular where they're, they're trying to evict the tenant who lives in the house. And so there's just so much work to be done to stop displacement of both tenants and homeowners. And we really need to fund CLTs in order to take this on. So I just want to say thank you again for being here and for fighting for the CLT Initiative. We really need 3 million this year. We really do. So with that, I'm going to pass it on to Michael and Arif.
Thank you, Hannah. Michael Johnson with the Mott Haven Port Morris Community Land Stewards, also with South Bronx United, which is the organizing arm for our community land stewards. Councilmember Sandy Nurse and other council members, thank you and their staff. Thanks for being here today and, and meeting with us to talk about this initiative and, and see kind of the things that have grown over the last year, the last time since we've met or discussed our progress. Our Community Land Stewards was formed in 2014, like Day had mentioned, looking at how community spaces and public land can be removed from the speculative market and create the kind of quality of life enhancements for the folks in the South Bronx. Because we're desperately in need of quality of life enhancements because of the health disparities we have, the inequitable access to green space, and how not only are we being displaced residentially, but we also, community-based organizations are being displaced because of high rents. We didn't fight two projects we've been working on for the last 10 years. I'll discuss one, then I'll pass it off to my brother, Reeve, to discuss the other. The Heart Center project that you see in this slide was a project that we envisioned, again, back in 2013. Shortly thereafter, it was vacated and emptied by the city, which prior use was a recovery center for opioid and heroin addiction by using meth, by using acupuncture and Reiki, a practice that was created by the young lawyers of Black Panthers. We saw this vacant building, sitting vacant in derelict since 2011, as something that could be a community asset, something that can provide the kind of needs that our community has. So we started engaging our community again about, you know, what's possible? What can we envision together? What can we create? You see some of the images of it coming together to envision. What can we utilize and what can we do in a space that's vacant? What are some of the needs we need to have satisfied? And so with the City Council's CLT Initiative has allowed us to continue to get in front of our community in a really meaningful way to, to where now, not only did we force or push City EDC and H&amp;H to release an RFP, we actually was the winning respondents. First time in our community, a community-driven development project, pushing for self-determination to be its own, create its own answers, actually won an award of this, of this nature, where we are going to have a long-term lease on this project, on this property, to bring in health, education, the arts, as envisioned by the local community. And so this, the funding has allowed us to build out more capacity, continue to be in front of our community. And now, you know, we're at a stage where we're doing pre, pre-development construction work and bringing on the team of architects and consultants. And but prior to that, we utilized the fund to actually reach out to entities like Take Root Justice to actually help us get our 51C3 status for our CLT. So the funds has not only helped our own initiative, it's helped those who have been helping us. But then I'm going to pass it on to Arif.
Thank you, Michael, and thank you, everyone, for being here. And thank you, Councilmember Nurse and Councilmember Sanchez, for championing the CLT movement here in New York City, and for, for understanding why it's so important. You know, like Michael said, this funding is critical to the work that we do. In these pictures, you'll see community gatherings and funding has been applied to, to bring community members together so that we can envision, so that we can celebrate, so that we can advocate. Michael mentioned the Heart Center, the community center, that we won, which is a major victory for our community. We also understand community land trusts as entities that advance open space and green space, specifically equity. And so one of our plans is called the Mott Haven Port Morris Waterfront Plan, also under our Community Land Trust. And what that would do is transform what is now a pollution-burdened waterfront. So there is no access to the waterfront. Instead, what is there are a variety of polluting facilities, from power plants to last-mile warehouses to waste transfer stations. It would transform that waterfront into an open, into a series of open green spaces, seven open green spaces interconnected by a green way that would provide community members with direly needed green space. Because as much as we're a pollution-burdened community, we don't have green space available to us. And it would also provide mitigation against some of that pollution. And lastly, climate change-related protection. So protection against sea-level rise and coastal storms. So we're thinking about and applying the CLT model across a range of sort of community issues, you know, from a community center that is, is desperately needed to green space that is also needed. And so with that, I'll turn it over to Iyappa to talk about his CLT Initiative. Thank you.
Thanks, Reeve, for being here. Everyone, good morning. My name is Iyappa, I'm an organizer with This Land is ours Community Land Trust, alongside Val Roselli, who's also here today. This Land is ours Community Land Trust is partnering with Cooper Square Committee and the Sixth Street Community Center with a plan to convert a Nisha parking lot on East Sixth Street and NYPD parking lot on East Fifth Street and in the East Village into affordable complexes, which will include energy, worker, and food co-ops. We're talking about around 130 units of low-income housing in an area that is rapidly gentrifying before our eyes and has been for the last couple of decades. The vision for this is to expand our community stock of low-income apartments while also ensuring the affordability of the units for generations to come. So we also intend on these buildings on being energy-efficient as well to serve as a local model for urban sustainability. And we've been fortunate to have hosted local teach-ins for community engagement. We've done off thousands of doors and plugged in hundreds of, you know, had hundreds of conversations with our neighbors, and we have a memorandum of understanding from Community Board III. More recently, This Land is ours Community Land Trust is partnering with two buildings, one on 1438 4440 West Forty-Fifth Street and one on 331 East Fourteenth Street in the effort to preserve them from being sold to predatory landlords. These two buildings were recently owned by Daniel Hebsalome, who is the worst landlord in New York City. And their tenants are extremely organized and have, for years, fought against their landlord in a variety of ways, including rent strikes. So these two buildings are now for sale again. And This Land is ours Community Land Trust is in communication with restoration buyers and stuff to, you know, who have inspected the building and who have shown some possible interest in the building, fingers crossed, to essentially rescue these buildings from further abusive owners. And as you can imagine, all of our CLT organizing is quite laborious and we currently do not have full-time staff. So 3 million, again, for the CLT Initiative would go a long way in helping us to hire a full-time staff member and so let's do the fiscal work. Val, anything else you can add?
Briefly, I suppose, yes. I should mention that in those projects that Iyappa outlined, we're also working with Housing Conservation Coordinators and also working with Habitat for Humanity, trying to put together a viable acquisition offer to the current owner of those buildings that allow us to take over ownership with some, an HDFC, of course, taking ultimate ownership and This Land is ours CLT remaining as the steward of the land to ensure permanent affordability. As Iyappa mentioned, we were created in 2020, which is relatively new period compared to other pre-existing organizations like Cooper Square CLT. But we are in an expansion mode. And for the work that we have ahead, which includes also a project that we cannot go into any detail, but it's a major project involving the acquisition of a privately-owned lot, we're going to need a lot more staff than what Iyappa mentioned, which is Cooper Square Committee providing some part-time staff. I work part-time. We need a full-fledged staff with an executive director working full-time, a fiscal manager, in order to oversee the project and also to provide much greater organizing efforts than we're able to do to date. But we're looking forward to continuing to work with the CLT movement to make it become not just a fringe element, but a major movement toward the creation and preservation of affordable housing in New York City.
Thanks so much, Val. And with that, I'll pass it over to Doug McPherson at Real Edgemere CLT.
Thank you. My name is Doug McPherson. I'm on staff at the Real Edgemere Community Land Trust, and I wanted to give a shout-out to Councilmember Brooks Powers. I think your staff's on this call for being advocates for us and advocates for homeownership efforts in the Rockaways and Southeast Queens more broadly. Edgemere is a community on the eastern end of the Rockaway Peninsula that's dealing with kind of the dual threats of the affordability crisis and climate change. Over the course of the past five decades, the city has acquired, in parts of the community, about 25% of land, which it's left mostly vacant and instorted. And a victory for the CLT and a victory for the Edgemere Community three years ago was winning a city solicitation process to take ownership of 119 of those lots to bring a mix of affordable housing and open space that would bring a benefit to the community. Over the course of the past couple of years, we've worked with community members and held engagement sessions to define what they wanted us to prioritize in the housing developments. And we've been receiving feedback from HPD over the course of the past couple of months on the document that we're going to release this summer to advertise the opportunity to partner with the CLT on developing homes for affordable housing developers who are, you know, active in the New York City area. On some of the lots, like the one that you see on the screen here, the location's too close to the water to be viable for housing construction. And so while many of those lots bring no benefits to the community right now, we're working to secure funding through different state and federal grant programs to bring open space that would bring benefits like gathering spaces, shade and like relief from extreme heat conditions in the summer, as well as like places for community agriculture, places where we could generate solar power to the community, whereas these lots have been languishing for, for decades up until now. In terms of, you know, where we are resource-wise, we, like a lot of other organizations on this call, are supported through Change Capital Fund and different private fundraising sources, but we need to think long-term. Those sources won't last forever. And so the CLT Initiative for us is really the long-term path to being able to sustainably, you know, attract and maintain staff to do some of the housing and open space work, but also to do like community engagement and outreach. We're currently dealing with the prospect of having to bring 130 units of housing into a community with no longer the benefit of the 50% Community Board preference. with no longer the benefit of the fifty percent Community Board preference. And this is an issue that I know has been talked about in a lot of different, you know, sections of the city. But for us, like having resources to do concentrated education, concentrated um, credit education and homeowner education is going to be key to being able to make sure that as many of the hundred-plus housing opportunities that we bring to the community are going to be, uh, taken up by community members. So wanted to echo things that, um, Arif and Michael and Hannah shared about the importance of the three million dollar ask. And, um, I'll hand it over to Edward at Northwest Bronx.
Thank you, Doug. Uh, hello, everybody. My name is Edward. Uh, I'm with Northwest Bronx Community and Claudio Coalition, uh, and Northwest Bronx, um, has been, uh, really excited to, uh, take part of uh, the New York City Community Land Initiative. And for us, uh, this kind of work was really important. Uh, we have been doing tenant organizing for quite some time, uh, and, and knew that we, uh, were not going to protect our community members, uh, prevent preventing just eviction by eviction. And so this work is really, really important for us. Um, and as you saw in the timeline, we incorporated our community land trust in twenty eighteen and have been looking about opportunities to, uh, expand our community land trust. And, uh, we, uh, this recent year, we have been able to, uh, put together, um, a new construction pro- uh, project, uh, that has been supported by our local council member Felice, uh, and, uh, hopefully, uh, will be one of the, uh, exciting new construction projects on our community land trust that will support homeownership. Uh, and thankfully to a lot of our, our community organizing that we have done, uh, we were able to, uh, to the initiative, we were able to, uh, add an additional site to this project, right? And also understanding that, uh, there, there's a lot of sites that are sitting in our neighborhood that could be, uh, sort of allocated for community control. Um, we have also been supporting, uh, also thanks thankfully to a lot of the technical support to support, supported by Nicely, uh, uh, the preservation of, uh, many HDFCs in our area. We, uh, were able to, uh, complete a preservation transaction with, uh, the Mutual Housing Association of New York Manny, uh, that protected, uh, eighty-four, uh, units of, um, affordable housing, but also we're currently assisting, uh, two others, uh, HDFCs as well. Uh, and we want to continue doing this work, uh, and also see an opportunity, uh, to leverage a lot of the tenant organizing work, uh, to look into opportunities. Instead of just asking, uh, for that, the many repairs that tenants deserve, uh, for, uh, tenants will be given the opportunity to potentially acquire. So we currently are uh, supporting a, a potential preservation transaction, uh, in a privately owned building in Councilmember Sanchez District, who has been a huge champion. And have been, uh, really, uh, supportive, uh, uh, in the te- in the process, but also of the Tenant Association and hope that, uh, this funding will continue to support that kind of work, supporting Tenant Association, explore, uh, acquisition opportunities uh, from owners who should not be owning our community, but also look, think about the assets that should be preserved in our community. Thank you. And I'll pass it to Vishna, uh, Take Root.
Hi, all. Thank you so much for being here. Um, my name is Vishnia Bhuits. I'm an attorney at Take Root Justice. We are a legal and policy organizations and we have the tremendous privilege of providing legal support to the CLTs on the CLT initiative. Um, many of you, uh, know us already, uh, just for a brief overview. We have two staff attorneys, myself and my colleague Paula Siegel, who provides legal support to CLTs on a wide range of, of legal matters. Really, we rarely say no to CLTs when they come to us for support. And if we can't do it in-house, we try to find someone who can, especially pro-no counsel. Um, but we provide support on incorporation and nonprofit governance, so getting started and also ongoing operational support. Real estate transactions, so kind of the paperwork and transactions often will bring in, um, other counsel kind of more, uh, more squarely within the real estate practice to, to support. And then we'll support them more from the kind of community perspective. Um, and then also just on a wide range of policy and law reform matters. So I think you've seen us on those as well. Um, we've touched a lot of the projects that have been talked about here today, but just to offer a couple of highlights of huge victories made possible by the CLT initiative funding over the last few years. Um, but we supported Real Edge Mirror and their huge RFEI win with HPD. And it was really kind of a multi-year project that, that took a lot of efforts. And I think with honestly, I mean, um, I see Alexis, uh, clapping and, and pro- I don't know if there, if the, if the technical support provided by us through the CLT initiative wasn't available. I don't know if, I don't know who else does this work, who would have been able to provide that, um, free, free, ongoing, multi-year service. And I think it really made a difference in terms of the competitiveness of their application and kind of our expertise in-house in terms of familiarity with, with HPD and, and the community in general. Um, we've also worked with Northwest, Northwest Bronx, um, Bronx CLT on, uh, helping steer a couple of buildings out of the path to foreclosure and actually rooting them, routing them towards resident control. Um, Edward touched on that project a bit. Um, and also supported East New York CLT in negotiating an agreement with a nonprofit partner for their, um, first, uh, for a privately owned rental building acquisition. Um, our CLT partners are doing a tremendous amount of work. There are more and more of them every year. Um, and also the, the, both their work and then our legal support work that we're doing for them is growing increasingly complex. There's more work to be done. The more advanced they become as they acquire buildings. Um, we see the, the need for the services that we provide for them is growing. I'm sure it is for the other technical assistance providers as well as for their own staffing needs. And so we really would, um, we think a, an increase of the CLT initiative to the three million dollar asks would really be a tremendous, very meaningful investment in community control um, and permanent affordable housing and community resources to, to the communities of New York. Um, I'll pass it back today.
Thank you, Vishnia. Um, I hope folks are feeling energized. One of our goals was to make sure that you all left the briefing feeling energized and ready to, you know, in these budget negotiations, um, these last weeks before the new budget is announced, to really be talking to the speaker and she- and others in the BNT and the budget negotiating team about this initiative and making sure it's a high priority for everybody. Um, we can exit the slideshow. Well, again, we'll send out these slides along with other information and links to all of the groups that you've heard about. So you can read more about their projects if you're interested. Um, before I turn it back over to Councilmember Nurse to wrap us up, wanted to just underscore a couple of quick things. One is, um, Vishnia's point about this long-term work and how in-depth this work is. A lot of other initiatives that the city council funds are more, um, limited to discreet services. I just want to emphasize that this initiative is delivering services to thousands of low-income New Yorkers every year. But we're also building new institutions, new grassroots, community-led institutions, the CLTs, that are meant to survive in, for ongoing years, for future generations. So that's why this work is so intensive. It's why we need to do so many layers of organizing, education, training and capacity building and technical support. Um, so that's one piece I wanted to just underscore. These are really creating institutions that are going to help stabilize your districts and your communities over the long term, um, all of our communities across the city. The second point is, um, that the city council's investment has really helped catalyze these organizations, many of them, and inspired other funders to really step up their support for Community Land Trust. So I think a few groups mentioned Change Capital Fund. It's a consortium of funders. They created a new four-year grantee cohort that includes several CLTs and others that are working toward community ownership initiatives, working to bring real estate, affordable housing into community ownership. That was directly inspired by the work of this coalition. And they were, you know, it gave them confidence to see that the city council was investing in this year after year in the budget. So we don't expect the city council to fund all of this work, but we do need the city council to step up as the work grows. This is about advancing the city's public policies around housing and neighborhood development. So we really urgently need to be brought up into a level that really reflects the incredible amount of work that groups are doing and are lined up to do. And last but not least, I wanted to just shout out Councilmember Carlina Rivera, who is, um, I believe on her last bid, her last stretch of maternity leave. And so she's not here today, but I know several of her staff members, I think Edward and Katie and others are here. They've been that office and Carlina, um, have been incredible champions of this work from the beginning. And we just want to shout their office out along with Brooks Powers, Councilmember Ayala, who has two CLTs in her district, um, the Mott Haven Port Morris Community Land Stewards and the East Harlem El Barrio CLT. So, and so many others. We really appreciate the range of support. Um, Councilmember Sanchez, I see, has, uh, her office is represented here, really supporting CLTs. And again, the policies that we're working on a separate track to advance within the city council. So we are so thrilled to be working with you all. We appreciate your support. Um, if you have any questions, you can drop it in the chat or raise your hand. We would love to hear from you about any questions or reactions you have um, for any of the groups that have spoken today. Um, it's always nice when you're presenting to have a little bit of feedback from folks and questions. So please don't hesitate. And, um, yeah, I just want to also open it up before we turn, before we start wrapping up, just open it up for also the other groups that presented today. I hope you enjoyed that sort of slideshow and quick kind of, um, highlights of a five CLTs and another ti- and two technical assistance providers. Um, but wanted to also open it up for our groups to share anything that you might have left out that you want to um, add into the conversation. Yes, thank you, Rodney Reed from Councilmember Brooks Powers' office. Yeah, your hand raised.
I don't know if you can hear me. Can, can you hear me?
We can.
So how do tenants of at-risk foreclosure, multifamily buildings receive assistance in mit- in mitigating, um, their particular living conditions, um, reach out to particular, uh, land trust organizations? Particularly in the Mott Haven Bronx area. I know I represent, um, uh, I come from Far Rockaway area, but I know of several dilapidated, uh, buildings and, or, and, and, and tenants. This is kind of personal because it's my sister's, but, and they're, they're facing enormous amounts of, of, of fines, bills, conditions. And how would their tenants organize and, um, reach out and get that level of assistance um, in the community from, from the L, from the land trust organization?
Thank you for your question. Um, who wants to answer that? You know, several of our CLTs are, have worked with folks in this exact situation. Um, Edward, do you, I know you popped on. Do you want to share a little bit about how you've done this work in the Bronx?
Yeah, I mean, and every scenario is so complicated and, you know, this is why I think, uh, so much more staffing. But recently, you know, like, I think like sometimes people are just overwhelmed, uh, with like a mix of like financial distress and physical distress and, uh, we worked, um, we have been supporting, um, an HDFC at, in, uh, Councilmember, uh, well, I think it, because of the redistricting now, it's in Oswald's district, uh, uh, Councilmember Oswald Felice. And, you know, we were able to, uh, get the, uh, the, the, we, we walked in with the building in a post auction scenario. Uh, we kind of got in contact with, um, uh, the, the, the lien's attorney. Uh, I mean, we kind of even noticed how, how much of an error that, you know, this whole process was, um, got the, uh, buyer who put a bid to walk away. Uh, then sort of eventually, uh, you know, got in contact with, you know, HPD and sort of like raise to them, uh, sort of how, uh, this foreclosure was started on, you know, a lien that should have never existed and, um, you know, got the, got in contact with the lien's attorney. And so I think like, it was just like figuring out like, who do we need to talk to and just being able to get the residents to be, uh, uh, eh, ready to, to respond as well, right? They were, they, they felt defeated at one point. I mean, they, I, I mean, we also kind of felt we couldn't do much at, at the moment we walked in, especially in a, in a post auction when the buyer really had the right to, uh, you know, fulfill, um, he's, uh, he's right. I mean, he had put a deposit and, uh, for us was a huge win. And, you know, really want to thank, uh, Take Rule because you, you know, we were able to, to get, uh, someone who put in a, a deposit who actually can eventually lose his deposit to, to, to agree with the lien company, um, and stop the foreclosure. And then the, the court, um, they, they've missed the deadline to schedule a new auction. So technically, we were able to just push back and delay the process to the point where they have to refile it. And, you know, at this point now, the, the building is not under threat, uh, of foreclosure and is currently exploring a preservation transaction, right? So we currently are supporting them in sort of revamping their bylaws and, uh, uh, strengthening their governance structure to then, uh, be able to, to partner with a, a, a pre-qualified sponsor who can support them. And so we're sort of supporting them in like, in that governance process, but also like helping.
While, while I can appreciate that, I, I, I was looking more like, what are the first steps for a tenant organization to reach out to a, to a land trust organization in order to receive those particular services?
Yeah, I mean, I think like, um, for us, it was just a, a, a referral. I mean, we hold workshops, uh, and community events regularly where we talk about this work and, um, people just hear from, from our work, uh, just by, you know, sharing, um, or, or content. We, you know, recently published a video uh, of a preservation transaction that we did and sort of got, um, for instance, some even city of fires to, you know, come, come talk to us about, you know, also struggling in HDFC. So I mean,
Okay, I, I need to, uh, particularly, I was looking for a particular answer from my Mr. Johnson from Mott Haven. Cause that's really the area. And if we could, if I could just get the contact information, I can get the tenants of that building to reach out to that land trust. That's more of what I was really trying to get at. Um, Mr. Johnson, please.
Yes. Yes, I, I definitely will share, put that in the chat. Make sure you have my, our contact, my number and my email address. We've, we've seen that take place and we don't try to, uh, control those efforts. We see it's happening organically where tenant organs, tenants are actually taking over buildings themselves. Right? But they do need legal assistance. So we're, and they do need to see what, how others are doing it. So we're here to help facilitate that rather than controlling it. Cause we see they, they actually need to, they had, they need collaboration. They need, they need solidarity, right? Cause they're not, we, we're trying to let them know they're not there alone. And you're, you're right. Here in Mott Haven, it is, um, pushing folks out because of the billion dollar development happening. Rents are going up. Landlords are trying to get that rent. They're trying to, so a lot's going on here, right? This is the last step of a last phase of gentrification, one train stop away from Manhattan. So please, I'll share you my information. Please share it with them and we can make sure that we can help facilitate what they want to do. Uh, we've had two situations where tenants tuck over their building or they protested the owner who then did illegal actions that they're now in court trying to fight uh, as a resident and also as a commercial structure. So, uh, it's definitely a time that we have that kind of solidarity and, and also collaboration. So we're here for that. Thank you for answering that question and I'll put my information in the chat.
Thank you.
Yeah, I just want to jump in. I, Alexis, I see your hand up. Um, and I'll pass it to you after. I just wanted to piggyback off of that, um, and just share sort of the amazing work that the Community Land Trust has been, movement has been doing, partnering with tenant organizing work. So we, um, you know, the Community Land Trust movement has a coalition called Nicely and Nicely has really been co-leading a tenant takeover effort. Um, partnering with tenant organizing groups, working with dozens of tenant associations who are actively organizing to take control of their building. Um, and that's how, you know, This Land is Our CLT connected with the Ohab Shalom tenants. Um, we have so many tenants that are really inspired by, you know, seeing these stories in the press and are reaching out. And I'll share my contact info as well. Um, but we've had so much success creating these partnerships. Um, and I just want to also name that we're in this moment where we saw Signature Bank, you know, collapse, right? And they were the lender on thousands of multifamily rent stabilized buildings across New York City. And the tenant organizing movement is really coalescing around how to make sure these buildings get into, you know, better hands, um, where tenants have control over the future of their homes and are really And are really seeing and turning to the Community Land Trust Movement. As a way to to bring control, preservation and long-term affordability. To these buildings. And so we as a movement really want to be stepping up. And I think that. Having this funding and and organizing capacity is like really, really essential for this moment. Thank you, and I'll pass it over to Alexis.
Um, good morning. Um, so Mr. Reed, when uh Mr. Johnson um reaches out to you, also make sure that you, um. So I um started this of the CLT process for the Real Edgemere CLT during Hurricane Sandy. Because I knew that after Hurricane Sandy, um, the gentrification was going to happen. Um, and my goal was to fight generational homelessness. Um, I was homeless when I moved here into um Arbor View. Which it used to be Ocean Village, which is owned by L and M. All L and M also owns Arbor and East next door to me. And we are actually in the process of taking them to court because I've also been organizing um the tenants. And so for me, when I started the CLT, it was really for me to buy the block back, right? To help all the homeowners who didn't want to sell to HPD and wanted something stable for their their um. Grandkids, nieces, nephews, whatever the case may be, right? Because families come in different forms, right? It was to save those homes, right? Because that's what HPD's um goal was originally before um. Mike Bloomberg and Rudy Giuliani gave it over to the luxury developers. That's where all went wrong. Once these two became mayor, they changed what HPD was. HPD was really to to help the homeowners. So for me, that's what the CLT started for, um, in Far Rockaway. But as I kept doing this housework, I realized that HPD has certain guidelines where it doesn't work like that. Right? So that's why I had to go through that whole process of acquiring the nineteen lots. So for me, please support this work. We need more staff for the Real Edgemere CLT. We can't really do homeownership the way we need to if we don't have staff. Right now, we're working with seven residents as board members and we're literally doing all the work and our staff member. Who's being funded by grants that we're really working hard to keep and maintain. And even with our donors, our donors. Um, we just recently had a donors meeting for CCF. They have family members that live in Far Rockaway. That are in jeopardy of losing their home. And the donor said, listen, I don't want them to come to my house. And that is real. I worked very hard for my stuff and because whatever happened in your life, now you're about to lose your home. So for them, they said, what is your outreach plan? How do you plan on getting these people into these homes? Especially now that we don't have the community um. Accommodations part anymore. I'm fighting generational homelessness and honestly, I think the only way we're really going to follow this issue is that we take. Real serious look at who's going to be on this reparations committee. Thank you so much for being here. Have a blessed day.
You, Alexis. Thank you so much again to everybody for joining us today. We hope that you're leaving feeling better informed about. CLT work that's happening in your districts and around the city. That you're excited about it and again, ready to fight for this. Um, we know there's a lot of competing demands in the budget. We're not asking for a lot. The three million really is bringing us up to par with the other housing initiatives that the city council is already funding. We hope that you're hearing the tremendous amount of institution building and organizing and more that's um really helping hundreds and thousands even of New Yorkers every single year. Um, we'll follow up with slides, we'll follow up with the recording, a playlist, contact information and probably other things that I'm forgetting, but we've been jotting them down. Um, so just want to say thank you so much again for spending the hour with us. We appreciate you all and thanks to everyone who presented about your incredible work. Take care, everybody. Have a great week.